You didn't get up and talk at the, or did you?
No, but it's five o'clock, it's time to open our meeting. Yeah, let's open this meeting with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Alright, good evening everyone. Chairman Talbot told us he was gonna be running a little late today, so he'll come in when he makes it. On the agenda today, we have Parks and Rec and roundtable discussion. And that's it?
That's it. Picked a good day.
Alright, so Mindy, I believe you are from Parks and Rec.
I am.
What can we do for you?
So, there was a couple of things I just wanted, I wanted the thumbs up to go ahead with. So, I did forward an email to Lou ahead of time. I cut back on a few things, cause my list tend to be very long. I wanted to focus on the summer program while I is home on vacation, or break from school, cause we are doing a camp, summer camp. And she has been hired as my camp coordinator, as well as she will be the head counselor. It is two separate, completely separate positions, to be clear. But, first off, before we get into that, I wanna get this out of the way. Basketball season went really, really well. We had, out of an entire season, we, I could count on one hand how many times we had an issue at the school. And most of the time, it was like, they had septic issues, so we had to scramble to kind of make things work. So, that's great. So, we decided to try out a third and fourth grade travel program for the spring. Or being overseen and run, and is coaching one of the two teams, because there was so many kids, they took twenty. So, they made two teams for this travel program they're gonna try out for the spring. It's just three tournaments. And the cost is just gonna be the tournament costs, or tournament fees and then a uniform. If they decide to, because they don't all have matching uniforms from the season.
This is all basketball?
All ba- it's just third and fourth grade, because that's where Justin's coach is right now, and he kinda wanted to feel it out. So, I just said, go for it. I love these next level programs when it comes to rec. Like, the All-Stars would, it would be like an All-Stars thing with baseball.
I see.
Yeah. So, we're trying it out and seeing how it goes, and making sure, obviously, it's, I think it was very, Justin's a very fair person when it comes to that, so, and I think that's why they ended up with two teams, because they wanted, there were so many kids that tried out, they wanted to take as many as they could, so each, they'll be some kids that are playing for both, just to make sure if someone's sick, hurt, et cetera, it kind of, it's kinda how travel works too. And then, maybe moving forward, something that we can do. They're still letting us use the gyms for that too, over at Hybrid. The soccer, we had some questions, I know that got brought up. We have a U-19 program that I really am excited about. They're going to a tournament in Florida. All their costs are completely covered by donations from local companies. I spoke with Primex, I spoke with, we were originally gonna work with Rindrec to kind of make, cause they were gonna use the program that they've been using, the name. So, we were basically just gonna kinda ride the, the name still, but Rindrec wasn't really interested. So, we reached Joe Heilman, Heilman, sorry, he's the varsity coach at Messineck. He's also the head coach for this program, I believe. He's been working with NHSA, which is the New Hampshire Soccer, it's USA Soccer. And they're doing extra coverage, they do background checks, training, all the things. Basically, Primex was asking us to make sure we're done. This will be covered, and it's fifty dollars.
Oh wow.
Yeah.
So, that's the stuff that you guys signed?
Yeah, we talked about it last week, like, hey, wait, what is this, Florida? But that's all being covered by donations?
All covered, everything. I mean, you, the donations, within two weeks, we had over ten thousand dollars. And we have more pending. It was just to see if we could get some sort of bylaw put together. I have a rough draft, and that's all that they need, is a rough draft of basically what we would follow. And it is just basic soccer, like, we take scorekeeping, you know, things like that. It's soccer things. I have to talk to Joe about this, because as much as I like soccer, it has been a hot minute since I've had to be involved in it. But moving forward, the tournament is May twenty-fifth to the twenty-seventh. They, I already have a roster, and they're upwards of, they go, it's like from, I think, fifteen, fifteen to eighteen-year-old players, cause it's a U-19 team. And then, two coaches, two adult coaches, well, there's three adult coaches, but one missed the cutoff for playing, so he is a manager. He's a nineteen-year-old, unfortunately, he can't play, I know. So, but he's a manager, so he'll get to go and play, go and like help out with the team, which is great. And again, even Primex was happy with the choice of, they, of, they picked twelve passenger vans for transportation. And luckily, they picked that, because they don't have any coverage, and they do not have, they do not approve of fifteen passenger plus, so, at all.
Wow.
I know, so.
Always, always weird rules waiting for you, as soon as you try to do something.
No idea. You have no idea.
Oh, I think I have an idea, Mindy.
I'm like, I'm going through this list of all the things I need to do, this like today and tomorrow, and I'm like, uh, uh. I'm gonna go wash my carpet. So, we did lose our bylaws on that USB that went MIA somewhere between me and me working for rec, cause we did have bylaws, so it's a matter of figuring that out.
Bylaws for what?
Just a rec bylaws, their rules, just what we, kind of what we stand for, what our, our goals are, like our, you know, our goals are, things like that, how we, there's more to it, like the process of things, like how things are handled, that sort of thing. But, I'll have something a little bit more formal put together. The other thing, we have been talking about this forever, and I wanna move forward with your permission to start a kind of flagging a, a walking trail along the perimeter of the field. Yeah, it's, we have a ton of interest. There's so many people that wanna be involved in this. I have zero idea of cost, I have zero idea of how big this is gonna be, where it's gonna start, where it's gonna end. But, I do have people that want to start at least flagging it, and then getting some other volunteers together, and possibly even putting a committee together to make sure that we're doing it.
Wouldn't it just be a matter of going out and cutting the brush away and saying, hiking trail?
Yeah.
Walking trail?
I would really like to do it that easily if I had permission to do so.
Well, I don't see why you wouldn't be able to.
I don't either, but I feel like as soon as I did it, somebody might get upset if I didn't ask first, so I wanna make sure we can flag it, have.
Then we could just put, use that on risk.
Yeah, there will be signage too, because I do, I, I feel like, you know, people are gonna take their dogs on it. They're gonna wanna walk, it's gonna be a safer place to walk your dogs. There's gonna kid, kids wanting to ride their bikes. So, there's gonna be rules at the beginning, on either side, or however we end up rooting it, I'm not rooting it, I'm not sure. But, if you're okay with me moving forward, I have someone also that actually came to me and was like, hey, I really want this up the field, and I was like, hey, so do I.
Did you ask them if they have a weed whacker?
I think we're gonna need a little bit more than a weed whacker for what we're like thinking of, but, cause we have to stay off the fields, obviously. But, I wanted to make something, obviously, moving forward.
I think I saw that, isn't that, there's trails in Jaffrey, right, at the Legion Field?
Yeah, that's more formal, that's like paved, I think, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, like bike trails.
We don't do paved, then go up so much.
No. I mean, eventually, I'd like something a little bit more than just, you know, weed whacked through. I think I'd want, whether it's.
Nice to get gravelled, but that turns it into a structure.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think you're.
And you're going through wetlands, so.
That was my other thing too, is I'll check, I am gonna check and see where the wetlands areas are, and see, see if we can avoid it.
Well, yeah, but at the same time, I don't think wetlands laws say anything about people walking on them.
No.
I hope not. But then again, you can't rent a fifteen passenger, but you can a twelve.
Exactly, exactly.
You never know.
So, if that's alright with you guys.
Oh, to start looking into it and see if it could happen, that would be excellent, yeah.
Alright, cool.
Cause I'm sure a lot of parents, like down there for baseball practice.
Yeah.
And it's only for an hour, and they could take their straw from the woods, yeah.
I know. It's, and this has been going, a conversation been going on for a while, so, yeah.
Lou, you good with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Uh, the only thing I would like to see up there is, when it starts getting, you know, set, because there's gonna be a lot of people around, I'd like, and if people wanna take their dogs, have a sign up that dogs must be unleashed.
I was even thinking about adding one of those little, where you can have the bags. Yeah, they, they do have it, yeah.
Scooper?
It's, it's like the little biodegradable bags that you can pick them up along the way. Most people who have dogs actually are, when they use passes, are pretty responsible, so yeah. And it's definitely not something that I'm gonna.
As long as people don't leave them in the woods, I've seen that. Where I go hiking and somebody went and put up signs saying, clean up after your dog, and then pretty soon, there's a bag. It's like, the chipmunks would've taken care of that a long time ago, but now we have to just look at a bag.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, we could, at least, or just say clean, I mean, I have one that, like, that I bring with, like, in her, my dogs.
Yeah, and, and if we did that, if we did have cleanup like that, there should be a garbage can right there.
Right there.
And gents.
Usually, the, the post that, that dispenses those bags have a trash can.
Have it right there as part of it, oh yeah.
Yeah, it's almost like a smaller trash barrel, that's like right underneath where you pull them out, so, yeah, you see them in all the magazines and stuff for the parks, so. Another thing, the pavilion, obviously, everybody wants it, everyone's asking about it. So, I would like to, Josh Alex actually had gone out and met with a company who engraves bricks. And this is something that, you know, we've been talking about fundraising and raising money, and not just like pulling it out of, you know, here or there from the rec funds. So, he had looked into it and found a company that engraves, and I thought, if we could at least get started on the fundraising and engraving, and at least starting the process to fundraise for the pavilion. I would love, I mean, I'm all about a, like, a barn raise, in my personal opinion. But if we could at least get some money to get even just it poured this, this season, and have that part done, and then.
Where would the bricks go?
The bricks would be a walkway from the end of the walkway into the park, and then we continue to where the pavilion will sit, but.
For a second, just to explain, over at Nashville Airport, they were building a, right along the entranceway, this thing that would have a big aircraft propeller on it to show that it's an airport. And they had a walkway through there, and the way they sponsored it was that you buy a brick, and it gets engraved with your name and what town and whatever other information that went down there. And it, it got to the point that more people wanted to buy bricks, and we really needed it.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
That sounds like Josh is onto something good there.
And it was like, I think the bricks were costing twenty-five dollars a piece or something.
Wow.
The cost is low, and we'd have, you know, obviously, the, what I would, I'm not sure, I guess it would, I wanna do a little bit more research after talking to Josh, make sure we have a full agreement with the company before I go ahead and set a price for what we want to charge, cause we obviously need to make money to make this happen.
Right, donation.
Yeah, and we do still have someone who was interested in helping us get it. I'm gonna look as for as much donation as possible. I can talk to my husband about getting the land, the, you know, digging part done in Level. And then, if we can get someone who can, you know, do other things, like donate product or things like that. That's something else we can talk about too, but I do wanna move forward in this, because it seems like something we talk about a lot, and we just don't ever move forward. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to move forward.
We absolutely. I don't think we would mind at all, would we, Lou?
Not at all.
As a selectman?
Excellent, okay.
Yeah, and I'm curious, so with this revolving fund, this is where your donations would go?
Yeah.
So, you set up new lines every time you have a new, so how do you track?
Well, we have, actually, I was just talking to Carleen about this, because we have a line in there right now for cheer, and it's, we don't use it, obviously. We don't have cheer anymore. So, what we're doing is renaming that particular line, instead of adding another line, and not, and then having ones that we just don't use at all. I don't foresee cheer coming back anytime in the near future. If we do, we can add a line, but.
That's my question, you do have individual lines that are parsing it all out.
Yeah, and we talked about it today too, because we had a check come in from Fidelity for the, the lights getting replaced on the basketball court. She's like, well, where do you put that? And I'm like, uh, we don't have a place for the field work to put anything, it would just, so, that's what we decided to do, is have a part, the Memorial Park line item, that would be where, if we have any donations, or say, we need any money from, you know, from the trustees, it would go into there, and then from there, it would go to whatever it was allocated for. And we do track everything separate as well. I track it, Carleen tracks it, it's the only way to formally track it.
Yeah, yeah, otherwise it'd be a, it would be a nightmare. I am.
She's not gonna have time to do her.
I know.
But on that line, I know the newly formed Memorial Day Committee was looking to do fundraising to help, if they were to hire a band or something, but they can't, they don't have anywhere to put it. I suggest that they could possibly use the Heritage, which is set up similar to yours. Or, now, here in Utah, if you could put another line, if they were to be able to fundraise, to have more money available to do parades, would, would that be?
It's a separate thing, like Parks and Rec is Parks and Rec.
What do you mean?
So, they have Parks and Rec, and they have basketball, baseball, soccer.
Yeah, and they have events.
Dances, all that kinda stuff.
Balls. So.
So, all that stuff is tracked.
This would be like a temporary measure for them to be able to go forward with their plans, and just in and out.
I mean, if you wanna keep it clean, I could oversee the committee, and it could be a Parks and Rec, a committee.
Just looking for options for them.
Yeah, I would say just open up a separate account.
But you.
You have to have one out of it.
Well, they would have to, in order to do that, it would have to go through the voters to get a.
Right, we'd have to wait till, yeah, we can't just open accounts.
Yeah, that's why.
An expendable trust.
But we could, the only, the only thing I would think of is if it was a committee under, under Parks and Rec, and I would oversee it, so if they had any issues, or for fund, fund processing, basically, I would have to sign off on things. But, other than that, I wouldn't really have anything to do with it unless I was like volunteering for the same committee, or some, wanting to get involved or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, it kinda doesn't really fit under Parks and Rec though.
Well.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, trying to help them get the job done, what they wanna do, and what would be illegal ramifications of one coordinator of Parks and Rec saying, I'm gonna head up, music.
Yeah.
Would that be illegal?
Well, Parks and Rec, it could be, I don't know about music, but they do show movies in summertime.
Life, life, yeah.
Right, but I'm saying, like, if they were to hire a band for parade, which they don't have money budgeted for, but, they, they were confident they could do it with fundraising. The question is, is how that's accomplished, and it was just a thought, and.
Yeah. Again, if, I'm, I'm fine, I love doing things. I like, um.
You like doing things?
I do. I like events, I like the projects, and I'm all for getting more, especially when it comes to, to that sort of thing. I want to make sure it happens, so if it falls under Parks and Rec, I can over, again, I'm saying oversee loosely, cause I don't want to, I'm not gonna be, I'm, I'm not gonna sit there and tell you guys what to do, or.
Yeah, and I'm not on it either, I'm just knowing their conversation.
Yeah. They can have their meetings, they fundraise as long as they follow five oh one C three rules. I'm fine with it. I don't, I don't see a problem with it being under a rec event, like program or whatever.
Something to look into anyways.
Yeah, look into it, let me know what, whoever it is that is kind of heading things.
Yeah, they're gonna decide that.
Sure.
Soon.
Okay, so, that is all set, and then.
Good evening, Sean.
Evening.
The next thing before I hand it off to my coordinator, I'll just really announce as quickly as I possibly can. I need permission, I do actually feel like I need permission for this, actually, cause we are going to be doing some upgrades at the field as soon as it's not a mosh pit, with drainage around outside of the pool house. It's horrendous right now, and the foundation is crumbling, so we're gonna do some repairs, we're gonna fix the drainage. Eventually, if we can afford it or get it donated, we're gonna even put some gutters on and drain away from the building itself. And we're still gonna be removing the bushes and things like that for, which we've already talked about at nauseam. But, one of the major problems is the cafe has to get moved off the building. So, I was gonna reach out to Grace Electric to have them disconnect electricity, and then we were gonna move the cafe off the building and to a different location. If it holds together, which cannot be guaranteed, because it is old, and it is been sitting in mud, if it holds together, we're just gonna move it in a different location, so baseball can use it this summer. Because they do need, or the spring and summer, cause they do need it, they do need something. But if it falls apart, it is what it is, and they're gonna have to maybe just tent it and have coolers and stuff this summer.
So, if it falls apart.
If it falls apart, but I just need, I do need permission, cause it is a.
You think the chances are pretty good?
No, I think it's pretty solid, like the floors don't seem to be too rotted or anything. I'm just making a joke, cause it's like a, a wanted replacement item.
Oh.
Yeah.
I promise that I do, like, for baseball's sake, because they keep that as a part of their fundraising, is running the, is running that cafe. But one of the biggest complaints everyone has about the cafe is it's in the worst spot, you can't see any of the games. So, I was gonna move it just kind of away from the building, and just even put it out away more towards the baseball field on lower, just past the playground. So, that way, it's on a flat surface, it's not in a mucky sup, spot. But it's also in a location that when we do start doing, bless you, bless you, pavilion work, we, it's not gonna be in the way either. So, and we'll utilize it as long as they can in the summer, it just won't have electricity. They wanna run a like court or whatever, but I, that's, that's not a problem, they have it all the time. Bless you.
Bless you.
But that's okay with you, um, again, as soon as it's not a mosh pit, we'll go about that. I don't know how much that's gonna cost, but it would come out of revolving. Just have it disconnected properly. So, there's no loops. That work for you?
I don't know, any questions or concerns?
No. It makes sense to me.
Okay.
Next to that building is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they had the right, other good intentions when they put it there, but it's over. It's no longer working. Alright, she has literally one that I left. Okay, so, I brought Lai in because she's on break, and she, I did hire her as the summer coordinator. We are bringing back the summer program. And I did put her resume and her, some of her certifications in the file, just in case anybody did wanna see what she is certified in, in, and how much she does, is involved in community work here and at school in Villanova, and Philadelphia, actually. But, if you want to go over it.
I have like a mini presentation thing. I just need my computer open, just so it's there-ish. Oh, okay. I don't, oh, you don't know, I was gonna say, yeah, you can sit, yeah, I can stay on, it just.
It's pretty bright. Do you want me to hold it, babe?
I don't, yeah.
You can have it right there.
Oh, thank you.
Lou, did you wanna grab, were you gonna put it on CD?
Yeah, it doesn't, it should be bright enough.
The remote control?
Yeah.
Oh, it's already on. It just, yeah.
The remote.
Oh, is it?
It's the TV shut itself off, after a while, it shut itself off.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Well, maybe force yourself to come in, cause I was late.
For anyone that doesn't know, we do call ourselves Nerd. I think it's hysterical, and I've stuck with it, so.
Awesome.
It's not going anywhere. Which one?
Nerd.
No, purposely misspelled.
Um, so as soon as I heard my mom got the rec department job again, I was really hoping to start the summer program again. The last time I remember it was when Deb and Ariano ran it. And I think I was one of the last age groups to also go through it. And it was always so much fun, and like, I loved being at the field all summer, so I wanted to bring it back. Right now, there are three weeks. There's two in June and one in July, taking a break for Fourth of July, just people going away, things like that. As of right now, school is getting out on June twelfth, so they have a week to kind of have a break off of everything. Age group would be rising first graders to rising fourth graders, so it would all be in the same school, and not too many age groups to accommodate activities for. There, each re, each week will have a different theme, so the first week will be like Out of This World, week two would be Holidays in July, and the third week would be Animal Farm. Just something to kind of base like activities or snacks and things off of. And this is just kind of what the schedule of the day would look like. We have worked with the pool department to make sure that this would all be accommodated for with lifeguards and things, where there would be an abundance of kids. Right now, it's looking to be about sixteen kids each week, with two counselors, and then another counselor just for half the day, to make sure that pickup is going nice and smooth with parents and things, that someone's making sure that everyone's getting home safely. Yeah, so, and then there would be two counselors, including myself there all day.
Oh, yourself and one more counselor?
Yeah.
My God, we just made sure.
And this is kind of just like a base of the activities and games that I was thinking. There would be one like physical activity, and then there would be one more like enriching, like craft activity for like, to make sure they're getting all of their energy out on top of just playing on the park, and things like that. And then, it would be, we would be utilizing the open space behind the playground, the playground and lower field. The basketball court is open if, with supervision. And then the other aspect, if there are rain days, we have talked to the building manager for, for the schools, and we have permission to be using the buildings, or the gyms if there is rain date. And we'd have the morning of contact, if there, we have to make that call in the morning, when they sign up on rec desk, so I can send a text or a phone call saying, we'll be at the gym today, because of weather. But that is, I think, it.
Yeah. Yeah, that was pretty much.
Impressive.
Thank you. She's already put together the orders that need to be placed, she's already had things picked out. She already has all of the things checked off, and the cost, everything, what the counselors would be paid. She already has reached out to a couple of people in order to hi, like, looking to hire for the three weeks. She's pretty much done all the things.
Wow, that's great. Wow, that's great.
Right, love it.
Yeah, this is just, yeah, so again, it wasn't really hard. This was easy, I didn't have to literally do anything except go, um, if they ask any questions that you don't know, she's like, I'll be fine.
So I just have uh, one question, it's, and it's awesome that you would like to do this again. Um, my concern goes down to ju- just how there'd be just two counselors on any given day. Uh, cause in the past, there was an incident which took one of the counselors away and it, it was a bit much for the other one, um, that was left with the kids. So do you have any backup plan for like a counselor, so maybe?
Substitute.
Yeah, like a substitute, or does, you know, things come up?
Yeah, so that's where that third counselor would be kind of be a part-time position. Um, they would be there for the second half of the day, but also if something does like, something like that does happen, we can call them and like, are you available? Um, and things like that also, um, yeah, I was gonna say, um, I'm, I don't wanna say my mom, but if something like that does happen, I can call her and she's, if she's not at home, she's here, so it would be a quick um, call. Um, also, I am like CPR, AED, s- first aid, um, and Narcan, God forbid anything happened, it is an open park. Um, so I'm like trained to deal with those things and then if nine one one and the police are right, like everyone's right there, so the location is also apt. But um, having a third counselor is there, just in case there is an emergency like that, that they're more than likely available.
And we will have pool staff the en- the entire time, so if there was an emergency, s- say, um, we could have someone um, from the pool staff obviously help in a situation like that for just having an extra body, cause legally, we have, it's twelve kids to a counselor, by state mandate. If, you know, um.
And you have eight.
Eight.
Yes, eight per counselor.
Yeah. Yeah, eight per counselor, basically, is what we want, uh, cause we wanna keep it a little bit more on smaller groups.
Um, also, that's where like the sit-down activities would be really helpful, where you, there, I hate to say everyone's contained, but they're all in the same spot, focusing on one thing. If someone did have to take a step back, um, to handle another situation as well.
Alright.
Yeah.
And you'd be there for each day, like for all three weeks?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Love it.
Totally.
Yeah, what was the age groups again?
It was rising first graders to fourth graders, so about like six, seven to nine, ten.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and a lot of times too, I know when I was younger, it was kind of split, like the first and second graders would do more together and then the third and fourth graders would be more together. Um, obviously, love everybody to be intertwined and working together, but sometimes, like naturally, the older kids wanna do like older things and they wanna go play football and whatnot, and like the first graders wanna do something different. Um, but making sure that everyone's just being like unified and not being mean to each other.
Excellent.
Awesome, thank you.
Love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you send that to me, so I can put it with the minutes?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Love it.
Thank you.
Love the enthusiasm too, and the plan, we're done.
The flyer is also done, I just need a QR code to rec desk as soon as I, we will make that, okay.
Yeah.
I know, she's mine.
Excellent, oh, that's really good to hear.
Love it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, still minus the shade, but yeah, it sounds like all the planning's there, you know, in order to
Working on that.
Uh, deal with everything.
I was sorry, yeah. We get the, um, so part of that is, we are still working on, and I'm working um, with Peter to get the backend of Delta House done. If that gets done, and I'm hoping it does, it's just get a matter of getting the right quotes in, um. I've talked to Shauna and we're gonna take the primary backend, it's just gonna be rec, and we're giving her one of the bays, so she has enough room for all her things there. And after that's done, um, we're gonna utilize that for shade space for the kids for the, before we start moving storage back in.
I think some, don't we have some of those like just pop-up twelve by twelve?
Awesome.
Things. Yeah, yeah, we have, yeah, we could do tens and I think you guys have ten by ten, I think, or ten by.
Yeah. Yeah. Or something.
Yeah, I don't know what's left, this is pretty rough, yeah.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, no, but just thinking of bigger, you know, if we can't get around to that, we can set up, maybe get two of those, I mean, they are always good to have. We have the ten by tens, but I think a ten, the bigger ones were significantly better for space-wise, but.
Yeah.
Oh, like the, yeah, the ten by twenty.
Yeah.
The ten by twenty, yeah, yeah, sorry, um, those ones are cool, I like those a lot for the, especially something like this, you could put some help in those.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Just for the time being, yeah.
Exactly, so if that, we can't get around to that, or can't get finished or whatever, then we'll have a place to do that, plus, and Shauna was really, she's moving some of her schedule around with the pool stuff, so she was going to be accommodating, um, and if we needed to have more lifeguards, that was something her and I discussed too, possibly having to have more lifeguards, cause just gonna be sixteen more kids, that we would have to incur in.
Yeah.
Incur.
Thank you, incur the costs, which we've built after discussing. She looked into local programs and things like that to get what we came up with the fur price point to, that would cover all the things. Um, even if we didn't have full sta- uh, full, um, full program each week, we still have a pretty good wiggle room for um, purchases and things like that, and she did good budgeting when it came to items that she needs, so.
Nice.
Excellent, I think it filled up quick, cause it's been something that's been brought up every single year, so, yeah.
Yeah, and there's other towns that are already sold out.
Yeah.
Like, they're done, and it's fe- it was February when I looked, I was like, okay, so. This is gonna, it's gonna, and just trying to figure out, I get, I'm taking a rec desk thing at the end of March, um, and hopefully I can get some information on how some people. I just don't want everyone getting all three weeks. You know, and not letting everyone have an opportunity.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and if it's, if it works and we can get a pavilion down there, maybe we can run it a little bit, a couple more weeks every summer.
Yeah.
Nice.
Awesome.
Thank you.
It's great to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So do you.
That's it, that's all for me, I said everything else.
Awesome.
Alright.
You're late, sorry.
I put the uh, basketball clock in front of the door, your door.
Oh, okay, yeah, alright, thank you, I have that, I know, I have so much in my office right now.
Yeah.
So you got authorization to uh, start fundraising for the pavilion?
Mm-hmm.
Sneak, get a walking trail planned?
Mm-hmm.
What else were you looking for?
Um, I just touched base on the travel, the little kids' travel basketball.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the soccer, I think I.
I mean, from us.
From you guys, I don't think, I think that was it, I just wanted to make sure you guys saw what she had planned and that you understood like, what we were kind of
That was it, yeah. Yeah.
hoping to accomplish this summer, to have it get things going again.
Good.
Excellent.
Nice.
She's a creature.
Alright, thank you.
Very impressed. Well, it is always a family affair as usual, so we work well together.
That's great.
Yeah.
You like to do things, is that what you say?
I love, I really do enjoy doing, like, when you're talking about that, I'm like, bring it to rec, bring it to rec.
Ah.
One more thing over here.
Well, that, that conversation can continue outside of the meeting.
Yeah, definitely, let me know, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good. If you guys don't have anything else.
Nope.
We're gonna go grab some dinner.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bring some back for us.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Drop city.
Thank you.
Alright. So.
I'll hand, I'll hand the chairmanship back over to you.
Is that, she's watching?
She's watching, yeah, okay, she's visiting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'll get the first one done.
Alright. Yeah, so we just ended roundtable, you didn't have anything you wanna speak on?
Nope.
Alright.
Nice.
Alright.
He's gonna, he's gonna be running in twenty twenty-five.
Unlikely.
Um, so you wanna lead us through your roundtable stuff, Debbie?
Sure, um, so I got a um, quote to scan all the cemetery stuff and all the um, those old, um, I finally got the quote back, I had mentioned it a couple of meetings ago, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for the scanning of all those old birth record documents and stuff like that. So the, um, and I sent an email to the cemetery trustees, I've heard back from one, but not the other, so. Um, but he said, please go ahead and do this, cause that mon- so it's like, I think it was like a thousand and eighty-nine dollars, I can print out the email, cause I'm.
Was it a, a close to six thousand dollars, total?
No, it was not.
For all of the, um.
It was a thousand dollars, right around a thousand, a thousand eighty-nine or something for the cemetery stuff, which would come out of the capital reserve, cemetery capital reserve. And then all the birth records that are in that back room was gonna be, um, I think, I think the total for the two of them was to like twenty-three hundred. So, um, but anyway, so in, I asked him if he could do a little better, so, he's revisiting.
Yeah.
The quote back.
And then there's a third one for, I think.
To finish all the other stuff that was in the basement.
Yeah, that's what, three thousand, thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred for that, yeah.
That's where I go, with the six thousand.
So, was the quote here, or?
Um, I emailed it to you guys.
Huh.
Last week.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
It's there, yep. Um, and then the revised policies that I emailed.
Mm-hmm.
And ma- made the changes to, thank you.
Good job on this. Okay. I went through them and really good job.
Thank you. So no one replied saying they had any changes to it, so I copied, I, I, I printed out the actuals for signatures.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I don't know if anybody looked at them. So if I need to do any more edits, I can do that.
Uh, uh, pass around the copies they had for signature?
Mm-hmm.
Look at that, that's nice.
Yeah, so this lower section on this one, um, for the application for appointments, that is, this is the only one that this will be on, right?
Mm-hmm.
Cause this, this is just a, us approving the form, is that, alright.
Right. Yeah.
I've already got it.
Alright, you wanna sign off on that?
Yep.
Okay. Pass it back.
So you don't want your signatures on all of the things? When there is one?
Yeah, this one should almost say policy. Or something, huh?
Yeah, no, I guess it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just that.
Yeah.
Form approved part, that would be gone.
Alright, gotcha, okay.
That was just for the record.
Yep. Alright, now hold on.
Those things.
All good.
All good.
Just like that, now, you remember Sean said we have to get rid of.
Yes.
What, three for every one that we sign?
Yeah, that sounds good, yeah.
Did you go through the drop, did you go through the drop box and say which ones you wanna yank?
That would probably need a workshop.
I know, right? You got your cold back?
What do you mean back? I just picked it up last week.
Oh, another one?
Now it's on its way out.
Is it allergies though?
No, I don't think so, maybe.
I'm wondering what mine is, if it's allergies or.
It's just another, another thing. Got one done there.
Yeah.
Nice.
Only mildly painful, Debbie.
What?
The policies, yeah.
Bees? On that line. So I don't forget, I do have a policy thing. Oh, and the roundtable moves my way.
That can go in my signature folder, and I'll just, you can stick it in the back, cause the minutes are in there. Perfect, scan those, upload them to the website, send them out to the necessary parties. Um, alright, so the next one was the Old Tenney Road issue. Um, two different things. So one of them was the truck that got stuck, um, the signs are on order. And, uh, I think he said it was gonna say no through trucks. Um, so those signs will be going up, um, as far as the paving goes, I talked to Tim Jones and he said he thought he remembered Dave Leach saying something that the road could not be paved. and he said he thought he remembered Dave Leage saying something that the road could not be paved. And you had said the same thing, I think it, did I copy you on that?
Yes.
Yeah, cause you had said it too. So I sent an email to Dave Leage, I copied Tim and Sean on it saying basically that. And David said he did not say that, he said is, it's like the quintessential country road that shouldn't be paved. So he didn't say it can't be.
Mm-hmm.
That being said, the residents on that road still do not want that road paved, so I don't know, I I'm assuming.
I don't think it's on anybody's radar, it's never come up on the road committee in the, well, I've only gone to two meetings, but has it when you were on there?
I thought that was the one.
No, no, we didn't talk about paving it at all.
The whole thing. I thought at the couple of, a few meetings ago, this whole thing came up that, and you had said you remembered, I thought you had said the road committee said we're talking about possibly doing Old Tenney in like twenty twenty-five, and that's why Sean said, I thought there was something saying.
Old Tenney? Was it?
Am I losing my mind?
I don't know, yeah, that alright.
Could be.
Yeah, I know.
Cause the other one, and then you said you thought that somebody said something that it can't be paved.
I can't remember the context, by which we started speaking about it, but.
Yeah, I thought he's, I thought it was because he said the road committee, um, discussed maybe doing Old Tenney in twenty twenty-five, and that's why you said that.
I think the road committee did, we talked about dirt roads, now whether or not that was on.
Yeah, I don't directly remember the context of the, like the whole conversation.
No.
Somebody brought up Old Tenney.
Not, yeah, Old Tenney was brought up, but we've been, um, dealing with mud season, you know.
Right.
So I don't know if it was in the context of that conversation and then somehow dirt roads came up and maybe Wilson Hill came up or we might have been talking about roads that would never get paved, quote unquote.
I'll have to listen to it again.
Yeah.
Whichever way it is, I don't recall the road committee expressing interest, I know Peter has said that it's, um,
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright.
Almost makes sense to pave over our dirt roads. So maybe it was in that context, just labor wise, cause of how much maintenance is involved in it.
Yeah.
Well, cause we were talking. Yeah, cause we were originally talking about the truck getting stuck.
Hmm.
And then, then you brought up dirt roads, but it was specifically about Old Tenney because you had said, I thought I remembered something about, I'll I'll listen to the recording again and I'll send it to you.
I remember the conversation, I just don't remember the part where he had mentioned that the road committee was gonna look at paving it in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
I thought it was just a greater conversation of dirt roads, um, and ones in town that would never be paved.
You know. That was.
That's not how I.
Yeah, yeah.
In any case.
Alright, I'm gonna listen to it again.
Well.
Well, somebody, oh, quite a while ago, spoke about Blueberry Hill never being paved.
Yeah, anyways.
Yeah.
And that ended up getting paved.
Yep.
Well.
Oh, never say never.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
And I think, I think where it came up was it's up to the board of selectmen, it's not up to the residents. If we own a road, it's up to the board of selectmen whether or not that road is paved.
Listen to you with the authority.
Well, I know, but it's just the way it is, right?
I know, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I can, I can tell to Tim Jones he can stand down then?
Yeah, yeah, there's no, uh, there isn't.
I I could swear he said.
But tell him to remain vigilant, cause there could be an authoritative board.
Yeah.
And he wouldn't have any say.
Well, I mean, if they got enough neighbors together and.
They could sway the board.
That's what it was like, right?
But it's the best that they can do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Most ne- most of the neighbors would be the ones in that retirement home.
Yeah.
The retirement complex.
So you just need to send the lobbyist over there and you get your way.
And they probably never get out of there.
Right.
They probably never make it out to the road anyway.
Alright, so anyway, so that's the update on Old Tenney.
Thank you for that.
It didn't even need to be done.
Like I said, I feel like.
Save myself a lot of time.
Well, it is fixed, but it is fixed, cause that was part of the other thing, it was.
Oh yeah, the sign thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good, like I said, you've been like firing on all s- all cylinders last few weeks, yeah.
Trying. I didn't have all kinds of nine.
I saw the Old Tenney thing keep going, I was like, oh geez, nothing's falling off the list.
I know. Well, I don't have nine thousand distractions.
Yeah.
Ninety-one distractions, anyways. Um, and then, um, I, uh, well, um, Chief Abel had sent you guys an email today about the, um, hiring the two part-time, um, two former full-time, uh, police officers as part-time, and I did inform him that you guys said that it was, it fine, it was up to him, but you're fine with it. And then he sent an email today, um, cause I had a, I had a conversation with him, he said he was gonna send the email and I'm like, they already said yes, and he said, I know, but I want a confirmation, so.
I make a motion, we confirm.
I second that motion.
So, yes, to be clear, we're, uh, confirming, uh, bringing on, uh, Mark Frederick and Tyler Swenson as part-time police officers. So, any other discussion?
No.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I could back up Debbie, cause, uh, as you saw by my question, I hadn't looked at these quotes. For the record scanning?
Oh.
So there's one for twenty-eight hundred and the other one for thirty-five hundred?
Yeah, so the twenty-eight hundred is the combined cemetery and birth records in here.
Okay.
The thirty-five hundred is the remainder of the tax records down in the basement.
So did we get quotes when we first started this, or like for different companies, or we just have one company?
So. Um, no, just one company, I had gotten the quote years ago and he did, so apparently in my argument with him today.
Were you argued with him?
I did.
Oh no.
Because I was angry, so they gave us a quote of thirty-five hundred dollars for all the stuff in the basement, like under here.
Mm-hmm.
All the old, big, huge books, handwritten, beautiful stuff.
Yeah. Time travel books. Yeah.
So we basically did everything in there, and I said, give me a quote. So he said it was around thirty-five, thirty-seven hundred dollars, which we budgeted for and paid for. Then at a point in during that, he said, okay, we've hit the thirty-five hundred or whatever it was, whatever the quote was, and it's only half the books, and I'm like, what do you mean? You said you were gonna cap it at thirty-five hundred, I took it to mean we're gonna do this project for thirty-five hundred dollars. Well, apparently it's an estimate, and they didn't estimate it correctly, and there were thousands of more pages that needed to be, um, prepared and scanned.
So where can people access this?
So he gave me a flash drive of the ones they've already done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, anyways, let me finish this part before we go on to that, cause then I'll get sidetracked.
Okay.
So then he gave me the quote for the cemetery and the other stuff up here. And so I called him today and I said, you know, one of the, one of the trustees said we can't, you know, to, they wanna move forward, I'm just waiting for okay on the, from the other one. And on the cemetery thing, and that's coming from capital reserve, so I don't have a problem with that fund-wise. I said, what I do have a problem with is you giving us a quote and then telling me halfway through that it's only covering half of it. When you, you know, you guys are the professionals, you're doing your job, like if I came to your house and measured for carpet, you know what I mean, they'd say, oh, by the way, it's double that price, and you've already done half, what am I supposed to do? So, um, he, you know, he, he just went on and on about, you know, well, there's more pages than we thought there were, I'm like, but you, this is your job, you guys are the experts. And you do quotes on this.
And they have access to look at it.
He, they were down, we spent two hours down there with measuring tapes, measuring books and depth and all that kinda stuff.
Hmm.
Um, so, and that's the one that was like two years ago, that half of it's done, and they still have the remaining half of the books. So I said, I'm just frustrated that, you know, if it was like another two hundred or even five hundred dollars, I can see maybe, but this is double. You know what I mean, your quote to finish this is double what I was quoted, so, um, you know, so I was kinda arguing with him for a little while, so he said he was gonna go back to the drawing board and see what he could do. So I don't know. Where that's gonna end up.
Hopefully ends up a little bit lower.
Yeah, exactly. Cause I mean, that's, to me, that seems ridiculous, and he said it's not a quote, it's an estimate. I said, when I sign it, it says accept quote, it doesn't say accept estimate.
Mm.
Nowhere on your pricing does it say estimate.
Yeah.
Way at the bottom on the agreement, it said, customer is aware that this is an estimate based on customer provided information. I said, well, I have an issue with that right there, cause I didn't provide you the information, you guys measured it, so.
Alright, yeah, we'll see what happens.
So, I don't know.
But.
I hate to be a wench, but I mean.
Oh no.
It's not a couple of hundred bucks, it was double what he originally quoted, so.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't know how much he's gonna come down, but.
So for access to the public, like Jason was saying, like how, what's the plan?
Here's. So.
For organization and access of the.
So it has an indi- I have it on a flash drive, it has an index.
Mm.
So you can search all of the old, um, tax records and, you know, when people got taxed by how many head of cow and sheep and stuff that they had.
And no property tax.
Right.
We should bring that back.
Right. Right. Right, I only have chickens and peacocks.
Yeah.
I'm good. Um.
So is there, yeah, would we be able to?
Yeah. So.
So a flash drive, how many years, them are only good for like ten years, so who's gonna keep it?
A flash drive?
Something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They die?
Oh yeah.
You do need to back that up.
And you can put the backup right on, onto the, your backup servers.
So once we start.
I put it on the cloud, I, I mean, I have it on the, on the server.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not.
So, okay.
Right.
I didn't know flash drives died.
Yeah, same with CDs, all, all of this kind of stuff, clouds die too.
Probably.
Well, no, they do, they, I've seen in the news, they, they will go back, these servers, these server companies will go back and delete old,
Then it rains.
Like you can't access things that you used to be able to.
Oh. Oh.
So there is nothing permanent, but I mean, you try.
Yeah, yeah.
Hard drives, you know, the bearings dry out.
Oh, that I knew, but I didn't know, I mean, we have to replace the hard drives all the time.
I just like putting it up on the clouds to.
Yeah, I didn't know flash drives died.
So I had an expensive flash drive die here on, at one of the F A C meetings, it was probably two weeks old, and I'd been using it for the last two weeks, and it died like here.
Mm-hmm.
So they need to.
A flash drive?
There was no recovery in it?
Nope, done. Nothing at all, just came up with errors, not readable, done.
Wow.
That's it.
Yeah, I may have a backup of it, so it wasn't that big deal, but.
Wow.
Get it on the.
Yeah, if we pay thirty-five hundred bucks for a flash drive, maybe we oughta.
Back it up.
Have a, have ten flash drives.
Oh. Yeah, well, that's what I'm thinking now.
Yeah. Yeah.
We need to hire a, a flash drive, um, manager.
Copy it from one flash drive to the other.
You know what, put the flash drive into the backup, um, server.
I already did that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
And then I'll just make another copy of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and every so often, you'll have to like do a new flash drive and a new backup, a new flash drive and a new backup.
Oh god. I'll set it in my calendar.
Paper looks pretty good.
I'll set it in my calendar for ten years from now.
Now it hasn't lasted two hundred years.
Ah, the failed idea.
Yeah.
And the paper's all still down in the basement, right?
So, they have half of them, half of the books.
What do we need back?
That they didn't get, because they didn't do it yet, and I said, don't bring them back, cause then we'll have to pay, pay for them to take them back to do them.
Oh.
So all the ones that they did do are now in, um, climate controlled boxes, basically, they're moisture proof and whatever, so there will be no more deterioration of those books. That were.
So they're accessible.
Some of them were quite moldy, so, and that's part of the cost too, is they have to prep the pages before they can scan them and that kinda stuff, so.
Hmm. So we have that big safe in the open area that came out of the old fire brigade building, right? That's the good place to. Am I, do you know what I'm talking about?
The one that doesn't have a combination or a key or anything that we can't open, that one?
Yeah.
Be a good place to put what?
Well, that's about as high security as you can get.
Yeah. Can't put anything in it, but, um.
No, the one out there in the big open area that is used, isn't there something there?
Yeah. A safe?
I'm not, yeah.
Nevermind.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know, oh, maybe I know what you're talking about.
The big metal cabinet.
Yeah, there's filing cabinets, and then there's.
This big thing.
Alright, I'll look on my way back.
Full of rubber bands and stuff.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, anyways, um, so yeah, so I'm, I'm working to try to get a better price on that, cause I was kinda angry.
Yeah. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Are we going anywhere with, um, getting some decent lockable, uh, file cabinets out in that open area? We talked about.
Do we need, yeah, do we need better ones, or?
Well, I mean, they, they lock, they just need to be locked.
If one that doesn't even have a lock.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but there's one that doesn't even have a lock.
Yeah, the cemetery one doesn't have a lock.
Yeah, so maybe another, another one that should be locked. Yeah, but like she was saying, if someone doesn't lock them, that was the, the problem.
Yeah.
Right, we, we need the one that, he does, do a lock that actually will,
Cause it was left unlocked.
You know, have a lot, um, a rod that goes down through all the, um, drawers.
Yeah, in, inside.
And make sure you can't open any one of them, you know, you can't force them open.
So Jen needs to get a new filing cabinet for all the planning board stuff and assessing stuff or whatever, so she needs to add one more filing cabinet in there. We could probably give her that one, cause that stuff doesn't need to be locked, and we can order a locking one.
Perfect.
You want me to do that?
Yeah, talk to the trustees and just make sure, like I said, uh, that other point before is just, they have their own
Yeah.
committee, board, elected officials, mm.
Yeah. Okay, alright, um, so we went through that, that, we went back to that, okay. Um, Warwick Mills, you wanted me to look into that fundness. So, I looked at the agreement, and that doesn't expire until twenty twenty-five. So it was a three-year lease from twenty-two to twenty-five. The rent was going to be fifteen hundred starting in, um, June twenty-two, and then two thousand, June twenty-three, then twenty-five hundred, June twenty-four. I had Carlene print out, well, and then she left and didn't give it to me, cause I didn't ask her for it, so I, I reprinted it. And they started paying fifteen hundred July of twenty twenty-two, and that's what they've been paying since.
So they have violated the lease agreement?
So. So they have not paid the, which was never signed, I never got it back from them. Because they were, remember, we were going back and forth in the emails about, he was saying we're charging more money for less space and whatever and all that. And I, Peter and, I, I asked them to be more specific about the space they were using, um, and they said they're using basically the whole building. So they've expanded now, yeah, yeah.
Again.
Like, yeah.
So.
Cause it, they're supposed to be consolidated down to ten thousand square feet, if I remember correctly.
Wait, I thought it was a thousand.
No, no, they need more space than that.
No.
Let's see, Warwick, then we have how many months of in arrears payment?
A thousand square feet would have been.
So. So June of twenty-three. So June.
Ten, ten square foot.
July, August, September, October, November, December, January, February.
Mm-hmm.
March, ten months.
Now what is this, fifty-nine ninety-four?
I don't know.
Um, cash.
Yeah, I don't know.
In, rent, building number two, fifty-nine. In, rent, building number two, fifty-nine ninety-four.
I have no idea.
Hmm.
Maybe that was to make, I don't know. No, cause they paid fifteen hundred after that too. I don't know what that is. I would have to ask Carlene, cause I know they pay the electricity, which is the small amounts in there. Electric, electric, electric. They pay it quarterly.
That was, oh, I see. This goes from July to October. That's what it is.
Huh?
Why that odd number?
Yeah, I don't know what that.
So it's missed, it goes from of twenty-three. It goes from we got June, July, October.
Oh yeah, cause they thought they were, but which is still weird. Four, five, six, seven.
They thought they were odd?
Eight, nine, ten. Yeah, that was, for some reason, they, normally they just send the check, send the check, send the check and they got a new accounting system or something and it wasn't set up to be automatically done in their thing, so we called them and um she said they would send the check right out, but I don't know where, why it's not. Forty-five. Eight, nine, ten.
Is that the lease agreement Debbie, that you have right there?
Yes.
Slide it over.
Yeah, so. Eight, nine, ten, that would be forty-five hundred.
This is an odd thing, fifty-nine ninety-four and forty-two cents.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know what that.
Was there electricity involved?
I don't know if that includes the electric, it must include the electric bill for
Yeah, it probably was.
March, April, May, June, yeah, so it's two electric bills, so it's forty-five hundred in rent and then two electric bills.
That's what they owes?
That's what they paid. That's what that fifty-nine ninety-four is.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
So when this lease agreement happened, that was, you came on in the middle of all this, right?
I came on when we wrote up the new thing.
This?
Yeah. Yeah, cause I went on the site visit with all you guys a couple times and um and then I have the emails back and forth of he said we were like increasing the price and I, I sent him that and he was not happy about that.
I know, he came in and
Right, yeah.
and we said.
Yep.
This is what it is.
Right.
Because it was far below market value.
Right, even, even that is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean that, it's about eight to ten cents per square foot per month.
When did that date start? Is it in there shown?
Uh, June of twenty-two.
And so on.
For fifteen hundred and then June of twenty-three, it went up to two thousand.
So there's six months plus.
Ten, ten months.
So.
Ten months that they should have been paying two thousand. That they were paying fifteen hundred.
Wouldn't it be eight months?
July, August, September, October, November, December, January, February, March.
Oh, I'd be counting this month.
And I actually counted June, cause it's supposed to start in June, so.
Oh, and they're supposed to pay the real estate taxes as well.
I thought that paid the real, that's what.
The real estate taxes.
Oh.
Yeah, you know, I, I remember that.
Yeah, that, that, that money covers the real estate taxes.
Yeah, I remember that discussion. Okay, yeah. Okay.
So beginning in June, the June payment should have been two thousand?
Two thousand, yeah.
Yeah, uh, it's June, June uh each year is when it switches.
Yeah.
So then, uh, this year, we'll be looking at, you know, the, part of the
Should be twenty-five hundred starting in June.
new rates and, or whatever it is, and then I don't see anything that says how much space they're allowed to occupy, but I thought that we had cut it in basically in half or a little, a little on the hand.
I have, I have, yeah, I have emails
Well, it just says the first floor.
saying currently you are using.
This here says the first floor.
Yeah.
Period.
Yeah, which I thought we had even condensed it a bit, like on the first floor. Cause they're supposed to be shifting things around, yeah.
We did.
And they did have people coming in and, you know, they had a, a bunch of people out here unloading stuff and bringing stuff out. I don't know if they just refilled it or what, but Peter and Mark went in the other day and said they're basically using the whole building, up and down.
Yeah. Which they pretty much were.
Are they using the, Stan's also again?
Huh?
They're using that second floor.
They didn't, I don't know if they took anything out of the, the second floor. I mean, that whole thing was filled up there with their stuff. And then we had two little rooms on the first floor, right? That were.
Right. I remember they took a whole bunch of stuff out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I just said. They had people.
Because they have wanted to send it overseas or something.
Yeah.
I don't know, I didn't have a reason, but they just had a whole crew out there.
Yeah, so we might have to cite clause B. And say they're in default of this lease and notify them that they have breached conditions of this lease and it said. Do we have to?
No, yeah, no, absolutely.
Yeah. And do we ask them for reimbursement?
Yeah, like the background?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it can be brought up to where they need to be.
I think there's no choice.
Is that something that needs to go through the attorney or the?
I don't think so.
No, okay.
No, it's pretty simple, but
Not at this point.
Okay.
I guess, you know, send them an email and let them know and then depending on what their response is, um, you know, we'll go from there.
Okay.
With Warwick.
Yeah.
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 With a copy of this and say, please sign it if you'd like to continue renting the building from the town, right?
Yeah.
We need a signed copy.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and really, an updated insurance form would be good too. Everything that's, that uh they're required to have um in that lease.
Okay. Um, and then I did have one thing more that I didn't put on there, um. I had training yesterday with B S and A. Carlene and Nancy had it today. And Mindy has it on Thursday and so far, so good. The guy who called us was awesome and understood our frustrations. Um, Carlene said it was great, well worth spending the day here and so, um, so, so far that's good. I'm trying to find out, um. So that's only three days. They, a lot, you know, they gave us four, Mark gave us both. Um, so I'm asking if we can hang on to that day
Yeah.
and use it at another time.
Yeah, cause you were certainly could work through it a little bit more and, yeah.
Cause I really would like to get the. Yeah. I'd really like to get the, um, do it during a staff meeting so the department heads can, even though they already had training on it, but no one uses it except for Matt, so.
Yeah, and we need everybody to use it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, cause no one's uploading their invoices, no one's checking their own, um budits and all that kinda stuff, yeah.
Yeah, I would see that. And they're able to now.
Yeah. And that's what that whole training was about.
Want to put the information in.
Yeah, but no, but no one's.
What's that?
Want to put the information in, yeah.
Yeah.
So would, would we need, uh, and I know Joe asked for access as well, would we need a password or some s- way of us accessing it?
Yeah. Yeah.
So we just get that through?
Um, yeah, I can call them tomorrow. I forgot about that part of it. I thought you had said you wanted the paper.
Well, I like paper.
Yeah.
But then when I said that, you guys said, well, you can just access it, well, that's fine, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good to see the functionality of it.
But the paper is, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Cause I don't have to zoom in and out, cause all I got is my little tablet, my paper. This?
I wish you could zoom in on that.
Yeah, that was a little small. I was like, why did it print so small? I'm not sure why, but there it is.
So were you gonna draft up a letter and then have us, or were you just gonna?
Yeah. Yeah.
Just get emailed?
Yeah.
See the draft?
Courtesy copy, yes, and.
I'll, yeah, I'll, um
Yes, yes, yeah.
I'll type it up, send it to you guys, make sure you don't wanna change it, add it, edit, whatever, and then uh, once you guys, all three of you respond and okay.
We can have respond to an email?
I'm gonna, I am gonna start sending you the red receipt things.
That's terrible.
I'm like, did they get it? Did it not send? I don't know, nobody's answering me.
My red receipts wouldn't look good for the last few days.
Huh?
Couple days. Yeah, I haven't really read much of the emails.
Yeah.
I had quite a week last week as well. So where it goes.
Yeah.
Or just shoot me a text and say, hey, no time. Then I know, I need to prepare more.
Well, we all have an agreement that you're gonna text us if there's an emergency.
Oh yeah.
And you do, so that it's working.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's working.
But I just need, well, like today, I didn't wanna bother you guys, but like, should I have printed out each of you a copy of the revisions on, on all those policies? I emailed them to you, but did you?
Oh no, okay.
I like, I like the way you handled it. It was good. We have the printed copy.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, that was fine.
Yeah, revision on, revision over email and then the, like that one printed copy was, yeah.
Cause I hate to like. Okay, alright, good.
Yeah, no, it was good.
Okay. Alright, so.
Try to conserve some trees.
I know, that's what I'm saying, I don't want.
They're renewable.
Yeah.
They're a renewable resource.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm done.
Are you sure?
Alright, Jason?
Um yeah, the other week, we talked about D P W five thousand dollar limit.
Yeah, is this your policy thing?
For a policy thing, yeah. And so I talked to Peter
Yeah.
and he's like, well just this year already, he had a dump truck break down, middle of winter and we don't really have spare dump trucks around. Sent it to one shop, they couldn't fix it, sent it to another one and you'd be able to see it in here. And it, it was way more. I ended up being in like thirteen thousand dollars or something.
Yeah.
And what, so his question is, what am I supposed to do?
I mean, that's an emergency, right?
When I eat it and it's supposed to be snowing next week. And he didn't say it in frustration, like I just kind of said in frustration. He didn't, he's just like, I, I just wanna know.
Yeah.
Or then, um, you know, he'll order materials. Whether it's crushed gravel or whatever.
Yeah.
And them bills can often just
Well, I think an update would suffice in that, you know, repair scenario, like uh, when Mike comes in, he'll give us an update on
blow it right off.
different cruisers that are in getting repairs and it's kinda irregardless of what the cost is. I just sort of letting us know what the equipment, like how the equipment's doing.
The cost of it down.
So he made the right call and get that thing fixed and.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, cause he can't wait.
But that's an emergency, that's different.
Yeah. So this is what I tried to tell him about.
Talking about like buying some, like a brand new piece of equipment or something that wasn't a part of the budget, um, but then he needed
A planned purchase.
needs it for an upcoming paving schedule or the road maintenance schedule.
Mm-hmm.
And then that's where you get into, just get the three quotes and explanation of why or give us an idea.
For things that are not budgeted for.
Not budgeted.
Planned purchases.
Yeah.
Versus emergencies.
They had, they have an extra um dump truck anyway.
Yeah.
What's that?
They have an extra truck anyway.
What?
There was one truck there that has um a um a, a broken pipe on a manifold or the manifold is coming off of, the exhaust manifold is coming off of the block or something and they've been using it, it just makes noise and, you know, and, but it's, it's usable. We were supposed to sell that or we, but we decided to keep it instead as a spare.
Oh, oh, I didn't know where it is.
Yeah, so like Debbie was saying, planned purchases, so not that it's outside of the budget, but even, you know, the bigger items that would have maybe been in the budget saying, hey,
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking at making a move on whatever it is and these are the three quotes and, yeah.
So, which. Different money in the, in the revolving fund anyway. And, and the main reserve.
Capital reserve.
Capital reserve, sorry.
Or budget, which.
Thank you.
Should he choose to use that? Right now, he's looking at his capital reserve and saying can't spend a dime because I need a new dump truck.
Right.
So like, no using it to buy plows or anything like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Well, he gets a one dump truck, what, every year or two?
I don't know when the last one they got.
We did that.
Pickup truck, not a dump truck.
Yeah, he's looking at a dump truck.
Yeah, well, dump truck is the five hundreds and six hundreds that it's got.
Yeah, however.
Yeah.
Um, so then, yeah, and then, then the other question was like with rentals.
What?
And all of this.
It's just part of doing business, yeah.
Those rental bills, yeah.
Yeah, all of this is, he's not trying, he, he just wants to do the right thing.
So we hadn't been kept in the loop as far as rentals were concerned really, um, but again it'd be.
Just a heads up?
Yeah, heads up and then we can start to see if we're, you know, spending you know, a hundred thousand dollars on equipment rentals, is it
For the same piece of equipment, should we buy it?
basically one piece of equipment or, yeah, exactly. So what would be a better, you know, plan, you know, going forward? Cause I know the budgets for uh the rental
Hmm.
um, equipment, so.
So it doesn't necessarily get, have to get approval, but just send us an op, well, send you guys, keep me in the loop so I know too, I guess. Um, just, hey, I'm renting this from Sunbelt and it's gonna be eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, which I think he's done.
Mm-hmm.
He was saying he needs a gravel crusher or something.
Okay, sent, yeah, that over email.
But Debbie was talking about renting a, um, a gravel crusher.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what he, he just said. He said, talking about rentals.
Yeah.
But then when it comes to like materials and that, same thing. It's only when he's buying a new piece of equipment that.
Well, even so. So even like materials, it'd be nice if I don't know how you put that out to bid, you know, like, um, cause there's a lot of materials purchased.
Yeah.
Um, so if he knows what he's gonna need for twenty twenty-five, then start to get that um, that bid package together maybe and even for the trucking aspect of it, um, cause it's been heavy on one company trucking wise.
Yeah.
Um, but just to see how competitive that rate is, so maybe put it out for bid and if you don't get any bids back and there's only the one, that's nothing you can do about that.
Mm-hmm.
But maybe, you know, other trucking companies will um give better rates or maybe the rate that we're getting is you know, unbeatable already, but then that's, that's how you verify whether or not you're getting the best, you know, bang for your buck.
Mm-hmm, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I totally agree with you. Tried that with previous
And.
um, head of the D P W and he had um, certain companies that he favored.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it was going, it costs more. Roger at the time was trying to cut the costs down and he showed me, you know, the comparison. And it was going to be you know, the under total, under a three thousand dollar difference, but that's three thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So.
That was annually?
Hmm?
Annually or, or a specific order?
On a specific, specific timeframe that, um. On a specific timeframe that, um, that we were talking.
Part of the reason for that favoritism, if you will, was the person like, lived in town, so local business, and he could call him with the drop of a hat, and he would immediately respond.
Yeah, we all have businesses that you have a good relationship.
Right, that, that, that you know you have a relationship with.
That was not the case in, in this, because they were all coming out of Jaffrey.
I don't know, well, that, that was the, he's worked with other, this is what I find.
So. That is.
I'm not trying to defend or, or anything, any of it.
So, and I, and I don't wanna go too far backwards, cause that's nothing to do with today, so really, we're looking to, and I think where some of these questions are coming from is, yeah.
Yeah. Nothing to do with.
No, it isn't.
Right.
Right, yeah.
But what this would require is, is to start tracking.
Right.
So that he can have an idea.
Right.
So, tr- maybe looking back.
Or, or start looking at other places.
Um, yeah, and then, cause to just, to put something out to bid, you need to give a.
Yeah.
Fairly comprehensive scope of work, and.
Ballpark.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And so.
Well, that's when you're bringing in sand and salt, um, over the summertime. You know how much you're going to order.
Hmm, they do that with the salt, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they have the state contract with two different people.
And, and a certain, you know, timelines, you know, for the materials, and I don't know why some, so many materials seem like they needed to have that.
Right. Right.
Well, jump now, aspect, cause I don't know anything about the DPW, so it's kind of like, if you can plan it out, you'd be able to put out the request for bids on these different projects that are going on, that could run into, you know, tens of thousands of dollars.
And the other thing to consider on this is. If he asked for a ten wheeler, we wouldn't need so much transporting, probably.
Yeah, yep. But that would require planning ahead, you know, cause those companies are busy, and everybody's busy, yeah.
That's. No, I'm saying for his next dump truck, maybe it would pay.
Buy a ten wheeler.
Oh, to get a ten wheeler?
Buy a ten wheeler. I don't know, not something I can talk with him about, but I think he's thinking, he barely has enough money to buy a six wheeler.
Yeah. Well, money, and then even, um, staff, right?
Right.
To run that, and actually do the trucking part along with doing the work, cause I think that's where some of the trucking, you know, hiring out.
Oh, it frees up the guy?
Yeah.
Yeah, frees up the guys to actually do the, you know, uh, the labor end.
Yeah. Quite a piece of pie he bit off, huh?
Yeah.
I have, I have a question whether it's cheaper to, um, he was talking about crushed stone. And whether it's cheaper to actually, um, buy a crusher and use it here, versus actually just buying, how, whatever you, you're going to need to really, that's already crushed.
Yeah.
So he's, he's gonna be renting a crusher?
Mm-hmm.
And I believe in the past, the rental, the crusher came with the crusher operator, because it's a massive piece of equipment.
Okay.
Um, and very expensive, so that was something he's looking to do and fund through the Highway Block Grant, um. Was that crusher rental for this year, and make our own material, cause we do have stuff to.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm. I think that's been done in the past too.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
I feel like I remember writing up the check.
How's it?
Well, there's even a, um.
Crusher.
Again, another, there was another request for bid that I'd seen go out, was for, um, gravel. So, we had people, uh, this is before I was on the board, I was at a meeting in the fall, and, you know, they were talking to people about, you know, the spring. Um, you know, coming up to, you know, crush rocks and stuff like that, and it was like a whole company that actually moved, cause you moved the plant out, and then.
So. Yeah.
Do so much tonnage, or, you know, however, I can't remember what the units of measure were that they were talking about, but. Um, yeah, that was probably five or six years ago.
How did, how did that conversation end?
The contract, there's, I think, three different companies that, uh, put in bids, and then one was selected to do it.
Hmm.
And I believe. They did the work, but then left the equipment, and then came and got it like the following year or something.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think I remember hearing about that, some weird thing.
Something, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so they did all the work, and, yeah, but it's a big piece of equipment, so probably don't wanna move it around too much, until it's going to the next site, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was all done at the landfill, or?
I don't know what the location was, yeah, Peter probably knows, I'm sure he was on the crew at that time that they came in.
Hmm.
Yeah.
But that was, that was another bid scenario, and there's a lot of bid scenarios, you know, like for aspects of this, but you have to be thinking, like a year in, yeah, a year out, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And then.
A year. Alright, well, that gives me something to report back with.
Planning.
Yep.
That's it, he had another thing he wanted to bring up, which he brought up a while ago to me, um, they have a snowplow, they're for a pickup truck. With them out, but he said it's not suitable for the DPW.
Yeah.
And it sat for years, just in the corner. And he said, well, what do I gotta do to sell it, and how does that all work?
Yeah.
And I said, oh, I like that thinking, unused stuff, I said, when can we have a DPW yard sale here?
Yeah, yeah.
But all he was talking about was just this one thing, and what the procedures are, and I didn't have an answer for him.
So, what we've been doing, just putting it out in the front lawn.
Put it out there, we get a better, better stuff with that than we do with the, uh, municipal.
Do we? Just bring it right out in that parking lot, and snowplow for sale.
Yeah. Carpet for sale.
Yeah.
We need to put more information on it than we did last time.
That, or, or, cause you're going out for bid, you're in, or?
That's what I don't know, is it like a silent auction kinda thing, probably, or?
Or just your snow picture?
Yeah, so the, that's a sealed envelope at a certain date, and we've opened it right here, like for the, uh, the limo, yeah, yeah.
Sealed thing. Yeah.
We did for the cruiser.
Right.
Yeah, that was fun, and it was really, turned out to be some, it was, it was rewarding.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, it was.
Right, the guy really needed it, had just lost his car.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he was very grateful.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's all, Debbie write that up, and.
Yeah, it'd just be a matter of little.
And it'd be sealed bids, like do at a certain date.
Yeah, I'll write it up this time. There was so, there was like a handwritten thing on the, on the car, and, or whatever it was, and was it the car?
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't even remember, and it was, oh, yeah, the, the old selectman's vehicle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but it, like, people would come in, and they're like, so who do I talk to about this? How many miles are on it? What's wrong with it? Like, there was like, nothing.
The limo, limo.
Mm-hmm. It was on the website, though, Susan.
Yeah, but it wasn't, there wasn't an, a lot of description, so, this one I would put as much information as I possibly could.
Enough information, yeah. Mm-hmm.
And who to contact, and who to give the sealed bid to, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was his.
So, you wanna do that?
I think it'd be good, I mean, it's the end of the season, so.
Okay.
Yeah, same difference, everybody's li- always looking for a yard truck.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does it run?
No, it's just a plow.
Oh, just a plow.
Oh, just a plow, I thought you were saying a truck.
That's all it is, he said it's probably be worth between two and five thousand dollars.
I thought it was a plow, the truck. Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were saying a truck with a plow.
Plow, with a mount that's specific for an F three fifty.
Alright.
Okay, yeah, see, that's helpful to know.
Yeah, same thing, it could just go out there, though, yeah.
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 Yeah, I think it was a nine foot plow too, which is a little bigger than.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just tell him to give me as much information as he possibly can, and, uh, we'll type something up, put it on the website, put a sign on it out there, and.
And get it sold before the April the snow starts.
Give it three, give it three weeks, and.
Yeah, might actually be perfect timing, we actually put the plow out, and then we get a big storm.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are you guys doing?
Right.
Alright, yeah.
So why can't we use the plow?
He said it's not, it's more of a homeowner plow.
Oh, okay.
But it won't stand up, if they used it, it would be just.
Oh, on the roads, oh, gotcha.
It'll fall apart.
It's supposed to snow next week?
Is it really?
No, I thought that's what you said.
No, that's it.
Oh, alright.
No, I was just saying, it's gonna snow, yeah, we'll put the plow out, and then it'll snow, yeah.
It's, it's in April.
Oh. Oh, yeah, of course.
See, making stuff up.
On TV, huh?
Yeah.
I know, time to go home.
Write that down, that's important.
Yeah, alright, that was my conversation with Peter, and I don't, I have anything else at this moment.
Alright, Luke?
We got a bunch of generators, what are we doing with them?
Have to talk to. Yeah, it'd be Gary and Peter, and Mike, like, figure out what the plan is. Cause, uh, Peter Goey was really pushing that narrative when he was here, and now he's not, so.
Yeah, I know.
Right, but we need to get one in this building, we need to get one up at the PD.
Mm.
One at the firehouse.
Fire.
Yeah.
DPW.
And then we have a fourth one.
DPW.
Yeah, okay, for the DPW.
We got, yeah, we got four.
Yeah, that's right.
Alright.
And that was supposed to be ARPA funds.
Yeah.
For the hookups?
They were free.
Part.
No, 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 I understand, for that.
The ones we were paying, part ARPA and part, um, capital reserve. Remember, we had to have them split out the.
Yeah, and then the trustees, and, uh.
The contract, and the chart, they said they'd pay for the electric, the electrician part of it, but not for the actual generator.
Because it was under building maintenance.
Correct.
Yeah. Right. So.
Yeah, I can work to.
So we got the generator.
I can work to try to, uh, pull that all together, cause I was involved in it too, so.
Okay.
So the rest comes out of either a maintenance budget or a.
Yeah, this, you got left.
Or a capital reserve.
Well, I don't know, I mean, that guy never got back to me as far as, like, can they resell those generators, I told him we don't need them. And I asked him if he'd honor the. Um, or if they would still do the electrical part of it. So.
And he didn't respond?
He was not back to you. He didn't get back to you?
Um. He said he was gonna see if he could try to, um, get rid of the generators.
Yeah.
So.
Cause the generators are still technically on order?
They, some of, a couple of them came in, I guess, I mean, they were only, they were only on order for, I think, sixteen months. A year and a half, a year, I don't know.
We never set up a contract with him to.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
We did?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we went through all, remember there was.
I remember, I remember seeing it, but I don't remember si- signing that contract. We, we got, um, a quote for the work.
We, and we went over it, um, numerous times, in a couple or a few different meetings.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
At length.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
At nauseam.
Mm-hmm.
At nauseam.
So we can pull up all those minutes, uh, of the generators.
Right, and you, you told me at, at one point when we asked him about that, you said, we're not obligated to the, uh, to the generators, because we haven't signed a contract for it.
Okay, both of them.
Huh?
I think I voted no on that.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't remember, I just, I remember Debbie asking, months before any generators are coming in, or letting them know that we had this other avenue that we were going to, um.
Yeah. Right.
I believe there was a time period of no response from them at some point, so it's good at any rate, that they're looking to get rid of the generators, and, yeah.
Yeah. Right, that was the last I heard, I don't, I mean, that was a while ago.
Yeah.
He said they hadn't come in yet. But he thought, I think he, I think he said he thought two of them were coming in shortly, like within days of that phone call.
Mm-hmm.
It'd be nice to get that done this summer, huh?
Alright.
So.
Yeah, we'll start putting together that timeline and.
Um. Yeah, yeah, only other purchase we're going to need other than phases for these and such, is that, I believe Gary said that they were all three phase.
Hmm.
And that means that we'll have to get a transformer to convert them from three phase down to.
Did, uh.
No, I think there was only one.
No, there's only ninety three phase.
Only one was for the fire department.
Oh, there was only one three phase?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Mm-hmm. So, looked up that you guys in the, uh, coming weeks, about that.
Okay, I'll, uh, send you all the emails and the contracts and all that stuff.
I probably have most of it too, I'll try and search it and see if it comes up.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Alright.
Nah.
So, first up on my list. Town vote next week, seven to seven, at Messineck Gymnasium, very important. Get out, get out the vote. Um, and on that note, there was something I had received, um, in the mail today, uh, from the SAU, the school. And there was one of the warrant articles, it was a bit deceptive, in, um, so it was ar- in Article Two. Where they had the, um, the amended, um, budget number, that's, you know, around, uh, one million dollars was taken off from that. And the default number, then when you follow it all the way down, they explained what a yes vote means, what a no vote means. Um, and Messineck, uh, Regional School Board does not recommend the passage of Article Two, cause they'd prefer it to go to default instead of losing, um, that one million dollars.
Right.
Um, that was taken off a deliberative session. And then right below that says, the Advisory Budget Committee does not recommend the passage of this article by a vote of four to zero. Which isn't accurate, cause the Advisory Budget Committee did not meet, um, after, um, that, uh, budget number was amended.
Right.
Um, during deliberative session, they didn't meet after that to vote on this.
Right.
Um, and it, I can't say what that budget committee would've voted, but all I can say is that, um. We did not meet, um, to make a rec- recommendation on Article Two, so it's just, it's a bit deceptive.
Yeah.
Cause that was, I believe that that was left there, um, because they felt like, no, they felt like they could, they, um, cause that's what I had heard, is that.
By accident.
They were told that that would stay there, because the Advisory Budget Committee did not meet afterwards, that that old vote would stay with that article. I don't know if that's right or not, but that's what's being looked into now, um.
What is that? Cause when we amended articles, you guys revoted.
Yeah, we waited till after the deliberative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To do our recommendations, did we not, or maybe we did.
Right. No, it, we did it at, at the deliberative.
No, we did the. Yeah.
The recommendations were done at the deliberative.
Hmm, good question.
Yeah, but at any rate.
Hmm, interesting.
Cause the Advisory Budget Committee did not recommend the higher budget. Um, and what we had actually been, you know, spoke about during those meetings was to take about a million dollars off, and it was like, you know, one point two, one point three million. In different cuts, in different ways, um, so.
So the recommendation from the ABC was from the original warrant article, not the amended warrant article?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And then also I had. We were speaking about, um. Offering rewards for street signs being turned in, and then I remember an email coming through, cause at a staff meeting, you guys kinda brainstormed and came up with an amnesty.
Right. With an amnesty month.
Month, and I, we didn't speak about it again from, at this table, right?
Amish.
That, that could have been a part of my conversation with Peter, he said he got a lot of signs returned.
Right. Back, yes.
Really?
Yeah, and I said, do you know why? And then, he said, well.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent.
They brought them back, and I didn't press it.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, so.
So, yeah, so we were thinking, I mean, they, they were, I mean, at one of the staff meetings, we talked about having an am- amnesty month, everybody thought it was a great idea, no questions asked. Drop them o- drop them off of the DPW, doesn't want, matter what time of day or night, and no questions asked, no penalties, whatever, this is your chance. So, I thought we put it on the website, cause I asked Sue to do something about that, and, and wordsmith it.
Yeah.
I did not see it on the website.
Hmm.
So maybe she didn't do it.
Yeah, cause I, yeah, I don't recall, even that would've come back to us, because we were actually talking about the fine aspects, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that we had revisited it, so.
So. Okay.
But I think it's a great idea, um, to do like an amnesty month, um, you know, that first, to see what the response is, and, yeah.
Okay, I'm sure, no questions asked, yeah. And we're gonna do. April, cause it coincides with, uh, you know, like Earth Day and Cleanup Month and all that kinda stuff, so if you clean out your garage, give us our signs back.
But it.
Yeah.
It sounds like. A good part of them were returned.
That's excellent.
Is now, did you hear that, or? Isn't that what, did you hear that or?
I didn't hear a good part, but I heard quite a few.
Well, like, I don't know what he said.
So you wanna do that for April anyways, what do you guys think?
Any stolen property in the town, you can return it.
Yeah.
I don't know, that's kind of a, that's interesting.
Well, the street signs, the street signs was uh specifically.
Specifically.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Including private road. Where people.
Any sign that go, went on a pole or a tree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I guess. Yeah, I guess I don't have too much of a problem with it, although, you know, where's justice?
Cause we'd rather. Well, hey, you know what, you can, you can have your fines and fees if we don't get enough back, I don't have to cover the threshold, yeah, yeah.
Well.
But at the same time. Yeah, I don't, I don't really like that.
Yeah.
Much either, and I assume a lot of signs are stolen by kids who do stupid things and so it, I like.
How mu- how many ti- times do you get an opportunity to steal something and then give it back without getting your wrist slapped?
Oh boy, that's the risk that you take when you offer something like that is.
Yeah, sometimes years go by or even months go by and.
Yeah, I was just thinking it's a good opportunity for them to
Yeah. To just.
Not have to pay the paper.
Yeah.
And hopefully learn from their mistake.
Yeah.
Give it a try.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a good idea, a week or a month or whatever.
Yeah. Do we need to vote? We were saying April, the whole month of April.
I can see that.
Yeah.
Just for signs.
April amnesty or amnesty April?
Yeah, just for signs.
This is very specific.
Yeah, just for signs.
Yeah.
For road signs of any kind.
What else would you say?
Yeah.
Cause.
Like you stole your neighbor's jewelry box, is that what you're thinking?
Well, no, but the town doesn't have property.
What else, what else got stolen? That got, was, that was stolen?
I don't know.
Oh.
I'm just saying. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Let's keep it specific.
Okay, street signs.
I, I wanna know what you're thinking.
I know, me too, I'm a little curious.
Well, no, I'm just thinking like if. If somebody has, I don't.
Chainsaw.
Amnesty is, it's this.
Yeah.
It is a little bit of a, um.
Okay, April is Amnesty Month, do we need to vote on that or would you?
For signs.
I was just questioning, why just April, why not just say, if you find a street sign, you can return it without further prosecution?
I think the hope is that you know, April they'll come back because people didn't just find them, they actually stole them, cut them off the poles and things and caused other damage, but to get them back and have, offer like a reset? Cause I don't know if it's one group or like if it's multiple individuals, like we just don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was thinking more likely it's gonna be the parent that sees the sign.
Yep.
And then if the parent sees a sign, you don't, you want your kid to return it. You don't want your kid getting in trouble.
Yeah.
So if you could just, if you knew that you weren't gonna get prosecuted for returning it.
Hmm.
At any time, return it.
And at the same, by the same token.
Yeah, we don't wanna. We don't wanna foster that.
Uh, and that, there's the whole.
Amnesty, yeah.
The whole thing of, and it could be somebody took a sign as a kid and is now an adult and is like, why did I do that? And so the whole thing goes into the um base nature of humanity.
I would like to have all the old Pratt Pond signs because they're all green and only about this big. And now with the red signs, the big numbers, the upper Pratt Pond, sign is like that big, we have, we have wires, you know.
Why are they so big?
Very wired, ain't. Because the new standard is for private roads is these red signs with the letters about five inches tall.
Oh.
Yeah.
But upper Pratt Pond Road is about, I think it was just over five feet, so probably not big for it.
Stop it.
You've seen the sign for Lord's Way, haven't you?
Yeah, yeah.
Who made that standard, the state?
No, we did.
Yeah.
You made, made them get five foot long signs?
I guess, I guess upper Pratt Pond wasn't necessarily thought about it, but uh, yeah, no, that was.
I don't think, I think that's too high. Yeah. I think that.
I think that conversation started before I came onto the board, then I came on to the board and it was like, so it was within that beginning part.
Yeah.
And then it still took a whole nother.
Two years.
Year or two, yeah, cause I feel like.
No, seriously, yeah.
I remember a conversation, whether I was sitting in on meetings or whether I was here, I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something, but I feel like you're around and with, then at that point it's just down to colors.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, cause one, one selectman didn't want burgundy, he wanted green or blue or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I was sitting in where Joe is.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I was listening to you guys.
Yeah, yeah, hey, there we are, back on sides.
There we go, alright, so amnesty month in April, for signs only.
Yeah.
Okay, no vote needed, just do it. Okay.
I don't think so, yeah.
Right. Cool.
What do you think of it? You really weigh in. Do you think it's a slippery slope, do you think?
I'm, I'm fine, no, I'll.
It's okay?
Give it a chance, see, see what the result is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the heck, why not? Maybe we'll have a whole dump truck full of signs back there.
Yeah. Alright, yeah, that's, oh, planning board is starting to get um ramped up and has gotten quotes and then the board approved um, a package for help from Southwest Regional Planning on the master plan. So that work's gonna start, yeah, this year.
That's exciting.
Yeah. Um, then one of the board members asked that an edu- educational component was incorporated into this master plan, cause it was absent from the last master plan. Uh, so that'll give some hopeful, you know, like direction to even the school board going forward.
Hmm.
Um, and the um administration of where the community would like to see the school go, I'm not sure what those questions would look like, but that would be a whole new section.
Okay.
So I think we're gonna try to do that. And, cause that twenty five thousand dollars, you know, from ARPA that we're funding that through is only gonna cover so much.[1612.88]